Good afternoon, School Board, Dr. Hernandez, District Staff and Community. The time is 5:00 PM on August 5th, 2025, and I call this Board Workshop Meeting of the Edgewood Independent School District School Board to order. First is roll call. Ms. Martha Bastia?
Here.
Mr. Frank Estenosa?
Present.
Mr. Luis Gomez? Oh, not here. Uh, Mr. Rudy Lopez?
Present.
Mr. Michael Valdez?
Present.
Mr. Sergio Lovato?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. And, uh, Dr. Janet Hernandez, I'm present. That the record show that a form of the Edgewood Independent School District School Board is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. And next, uh, our pledge allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag. Please have it.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will stand up on the banner of the South Constitution of America, and the Republic of America, the President, the Nation of God, the Lord of all, and the peace, harmony, and prosperity of this world. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Move aside. Okay, thank you, may be seated. Okay, Superintendent Dr. Hernandez, are there any public comments?
Do not have any public comments.
Thank you, sir. And your report.
Alright, so, good afternoon, uh, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Um, welcome back to, uh, what is now the, our beginning month of the school year. Many of you know, we do start our school year, uh, August 12th, that is next week on Tuesday. So, we did want to highlight that for everyone here. Also wanted to highlight, as you know a lot of my, uh, presentations, I teach actual pictures of what was going on in the district. Lots of summer work going on across our district. Uh, many summer opportunities, I've even heard your report, I don't know, it's a different month, but this is just a little bit from our band camp. Our kids are getting ready for, uh, our fall season. Obviously, October will get here sooner than later. Uh, our kids do participate in performing, uh, marching band competition in October. And so, uh, just a small snippet of what's happening in our school district. First thing I want to do is I want to thank this board, uh, for a lot of the time you've been spending with us over the last week. Uh, the board participated last week on Thursday in our board workshop, uh, this is still, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, in our Team of Eight training. I'll adjust that slide, um, uh, when we, when we upload this. But I want to thank the board for participating last Thursday night in our se- uh, third Team of Eight training of this year. By year I define that as 2025. So, thank you, board, for continuing to one, uh, continue to grow yourself as leaders of the school district, and also continuing to learn about just the different, uh, policies that govern our school district. I know that was one of the presentations we gave you that night in terms of, uh, Board Update 125. And then, of course, we did also go over our No Star Governance, uh, model of governance here in our school district. So, thank you for participating in that. Uh, the time that the board is volunteering, I want to be able to, that this is a volunteer post, uh, is all part of developing an effective organization and framework in our school district. So, again, board, I want to thank you for spending some time with us, uh, both on Thursday, for our board officers on Friday, and then, of course, a lot of you came on Saturday also for our, uh, documentary, the Walkout Documentary, which hopefully by the regular board meeting, I'll have that linked already, so we can share that with our general community. Uh, so, thank you again for participating. I know that's a lot of time out of your busy schedule, uh, to come to that. And then, of course, there was also the backpack event that happened that day. So, thank you again, board. Uh, this is part of our ultimate responsibility as a board and, uh, team to ensure that every student has an opportunity to graduate a college, career, military grade. That's always the number one goal of the district, the outcome. And we do that by following our four values, being professional, being accountable, and communicate often, early and often, as much as we can, uh, on the things that are happening in our school district. Part of our quality service entrance, which continue to be making sure that we are making a connection, uh, with our community, and that we're learning that for us in respect, little by little, right? And that as board members, uh, as superintendent and team, that we keep, uh, growth mindset. So, that we're always learning and bearing the services that we provide in our school district. So, for tonight, I want to share with the community the work that the board does in preparation for their regular monthly meeting on this month of the August 19th. Uh, the board has particip- or is participating today in the August 5th, uh, workshop. On Friday, the board, you will receive a board update on the 8th and the 15th. This is the information, any follow-up, uh, information that we hear tonight, any questions that you may pose. Uh, those who go out on a board update, that'll be in preparation for a meeting on the 19th. There is not a board update usually the week after the regular meeting, that's the 22nd. Actually, since the time, but that's the actual date of our birthday. Uh, and then, you'll have another one on the 29th. And that'll be in preparation for our meeting, our workshop, um, on September, uh, 2nd. So, let's move alongside that. Uh, I also want to share with the board a change that's coming to, uh, to, uh, to us from our friends in Austin for starting September 1st. Starting September 1st, we will start, uh, following the Open Meetings Act is now changing. It does require that all agendas in the state of Texas, that's all under Texas Open Meetings Act, be posted three full days, business days, before a, a meeting. Now, that precludes, uh, holidays, so for example, Labor Day will not count. So, that means we have to post three days before that. I'm gonna go back to this. So, we would be posting that meeting on Tuesday, the 26th. Now, just to put that into context, for members of our community, that means there's a lot of work that this particular team has to do. So, I want to thank, couple, poke, poke, sir. First, the board members, especially our officer, your flexibility in making yourself available for us to set the agenda, both the president, uh, vice president, and the secretary of the board, and then also the senior leadership team, because your dates are having to move up. Uh, it is also, you know, a month where we have a federal holiday, it makes the dates move up quicker. You notice, we're gonna finish the regular board meetings on the 19th, and we've gotta start planning already for September. Now, we're usually pretty good about planning ahead, man. But there's, there, we're still, we're still a running school, okay? Again, I just want to give a little bit of context, but also be fully transparent about the change in the Open Meetings Act. Start September 1st. It's gonna apply to our meeting moving forward, just so you know. You'll recognize the other symbols that are on there in regards to updates and things. Uh, so, for my superintendent board, this is a picture we took from the other day at our competition. This is our mariachi group from the Breakfast School of Innovation. Uh, I'd like to show off the gigs as much as I can. They did a fantastic job that day at the competition. Thank you to the board members that attended. I also want to remind our board members, as we open up our school year, uh, I'll give you a few seconds there to read, open the order, if you have a tweet upon. These were, uh, presented last week to Team of Eight by Ms. Salinas. But always remembering that, one, see first understanding questions that are being given, and then, you can read the rest of yourself. All of that's being done so that, one, we maintain the dignity and the professionalism of this environment. And then, of course, we need space, so more than, uh, anyone that may have a question can ask a question. Any questions that aren't answered tonight? I believe we've already put index cards out?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're gonna get there, remember, we'll put index cards out, so if you have any follow-up questions, uh, you can leave those on the table, and we will follow up with the appropriate captain. And remember, board members, anytime we, anybody asks a question, it goes out to all of us. That's always been my promise to you. Uh, so, again, there will be opportunities throughout the presentation before I turn and talk. So, the people that are sitting next to you are there to assist you, so, captain members and SLC, please remember that, um, part of my expectation of you is to make sure that you're working with your board members in case they have questions, before we elevate them, uh, up to a greater group. So, again, as I mentioned, these aren't single learning outcomes, say I've already gone over the board cases, talked about Team of Eight. Uh, talked a little bit about the start of school. Uh, this is our agenda for the night. Always feel look at your agenda. We have highlighted items that are green, are items that are new. These are items that are brand new, that you haven't seen, uh, in the last four months. And then, the items that are, help me out with a couple items. Like, orangey colored, uh, these are recurring items. What does that mean? Recurring items mean that these come up every year, but these are not new, they're new. Items that you have not seen before. Amounts may have changed, but we'll clarify that for you. But these are not any new items that you haven't seen in prior years, so, I want to make sure that we, uh, we put that designation on and distinguish that for you. Tonight, you're gonna hear from our leadership team led by our deputy superintendent. You're gonna hear a couple presentations there. We do have guests in the room, they're gonna present by, uh, uh, by, uh, me. Uh, Learn for Life Group, that has a presentation that goes into the board to consider. And then, uh, when we close out our business operations, led by Ms. Martinez and her team, on a few items that are going up. One major item is the compensation recommendation. Uh, board, we did approve the budget in June. Uh, we did tell you we would be bringing the compensation up in August. So, this is our first, uh, conversation with you about that compensation plan. Uh, Ms. Martinez and Ms. Trevino will be coming up to speak about it. And so, these are the dates for future, uh, board meetings this month. You'll see those there for your, uh, for your perusal. And again, as I mentioned, August 12th, first day of school. Board members, my office will be reaching out to you to find out your availability. We'd love for you to come out and join us in greeting kids back into school, if you're available. Uh, and so, we'll, we'll reach out to you, help us welcome our kids back. And then, of course, there are also back-to-school events this week, with meet the teacher night. So, for the board members, just a quick reminder, please let, uh, our office know if you're planning to attend. Per the board operating procedures, give us at least, uh, 48 hours, so we can let the principals know. Uh, if you are available, follow me. Uh, we'll have parents in different schools. I know at least one of you is a parent, and so, I know you're probably attending for high school, uh, events. But again, let us know if you can do it, all seven of you, if you're prepared to help and cooperate for that. Uh, that brings my presentation to a close, and at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Salinas, who will peel off our first presentation.
Well, good, good evening. While we're getting the Learn for Life presentation up, I just wanted to take a moment, uh, to just provide a high-level overview of what the expectations are for this presentation. This presentation that you're gonna hear today is not for action. It is an information item. So, the Learn for Life team in collaboration with Edgewood ISD is currently exploring Senate Bill 569, which is the virtual hybrid, um, model. And so, a lot of the information is new, right? So, we'll be learning rules along the way. And so, our commitment today is to first engage and start the conversations with what we know now and why it's important for Learn for Life. Uh, the next phase will be to continue to keep you updated on what we're learning, to see if this is something that we want to bring back to the board for approval. Uh, we know that there will be an application process, and so, this is our way of ensuring that we are starting planning now, so we are not behind when that application process comes up, and we have enough information to confidently come to this board and seek approval, should that be the direction that Edgewood and Learn for Life on the tape. So, with that being said, uh, I will, let me ask you, Mrs. Valerie Chase, she is the Senior Vice President of LLAC. She's in charge of Business Administration, and Ms. Kristen Willman to the podium, where we'll be presenting, um, their presentation. I know we haven't gotten that up yet. And then, they'll, um, introduce you to the rest of the Learn for Life team. Thank you.
I'll wait for the PowerPoint. Thank you. Good afternoon, Board President Hernandez, esteemed board members, Superintendent Hernandez, and Edgewood ISD staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. My name is Valerie Chase. I am the Senior Vice President of Business Development for Lifelong Learning Administration Corporation, the service provider for Richline Education Corporation and Learn for Life Edgewood. I am here today with LLAC colleagues, um, Mike Benkert, Vice President of Business Relations, and Indy Holmes, Director of National Governance, um, as well as with Principal Willman at Learn for Life Edgewood, who will address you in just a few moments. We are here today to share our vision to improve educational services and grow Learn for Life Edgewood through the new law that was recently passed, SB 569, which allows for districts to apply to operate hybrid and virtual learning, um, programs on designated campuses. Learn for Life has continuously invested in policy advocacy to promote more flexible and innovative learning models in new Texas laws. We strive to serve students here through a program more closely aligned to our original personalized learning model that was developed 25 years ago this year. We're currently celebrating our 25th anniversary, the silver anniversary, and let me take this moment to congratulate you all on your z- diamond anniversary, 75 years, wow! It just shows how much farther ahead, um, than you are to us, and we're so thrilled to be partnered with you. Through our, uh, recent engagement with the Edgewood ISD to explore flexible school day programs, and in preparing for and presenting today, we are embarking on the one-year planning period as required by SB 569. The planning year. This year, the Richline Education Board will oversee and monitor Learn for Life Edgewood's school leadership and LLAC teams in drafting operations and academic plans to lay the groundwork for a hybrid learning program we hope to implement next school year. The team will engage Edgewood ISD departments, the TBA, and other stakeholders in developing the program design and the needs in order to position the district to apply for the hybrid learning program as soon as allowed. I would now like to ask Principal Willman to present on the successes of Edgewood ISD's 1882 partnership with Learn for Life.
Good evening. It is great to be back with you today to share the successes of our campus. My name is Kristen Willman, and I am the proud principal of Learn for Life Edgewood. One of our greatest accomplishments that we are most proud of is the continued growth rooted in a trusted, supportive partnership with you, Edgewood ISD. We have experienced the significant graduation milestones, having recently graduated 74 students to include a total of 263 graduates since the opening of fall of 2021. We have also tripled our enrollment driven by our personal, wise, learning approach, where teachers serve as mentors who consistently check in with students and review topics such as attendance, academic progress, and individual learning plans. Our wraparound services include phenomenon to do, counseling, bus passes, snacks, clothing, and anything that may arise during a student-teacher check-in. We also have a dedicated Hope Room where our teen parents are able to continue their studies while their children engage with one another and play. Why hybrid learning at Learn for Life? Transforming our campus into a hybrid learning environment is about removing persistent barriers to student success. Many of our students struggle with daily transportation, family or work responsibilities, and mental health challenges. A hybrid model offers the flexibility that need, that they need to stay engaged, even when life gets complicated. It also supports personalized learning, allowing each student to move at their own pace and access resources that fit their individual needs. By embracing hybrid learning, we create an inclusive, equitable, future-ready education system. We personalize learning at each student's pace and place. We meet students where they are academically, mentally, and emotionally. Hybrid learning allows us to tailor the experience to each student's unique needs, attendance history, and learning style. Our growth, our goal is growth for every learner regardless of their starting point. High-quality learning happens when schools, families, and community partners work together. Hybrid learning strengthens these ties, making education more accessible and relevant beyond the classroom. Together, we create a wraparound support system that lifts all students. We aim to grow services beyond district boundaries to serve the broader Fair County area. This expansion will reflect our diverse regional community while always centering the needs of our Edgewood families. Hybrid learning offers a scalable solution that opens doors to more students. Our relationship with Edgewood ISD is the foundation for innovation and equity. Continued investment in hybrid learning deepens this partnership, aligning our vision for student success. Together, Edgewood ISD and Learn for Life are building a future-ready model for public education. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Valerie.
Thank you, Ms. Willman. Finally, next steps. Our next steps include ongoing engagement with our advocacy partners, with the TBA, and here with the district and our school partners to learn and share as more clarity is achieved. The TBA is expected to release draft rules this fall. We will have an opportunity to respond before implementation rules are finalized, after which the application will be released in the spring. The team here will provide the Edgewood ISD board with status updates and will present a legislative expert who can offer an in-depth look at TBA rules and implementation timelines regarding SB 569. We look forward to engagement with Edgewood ISD staff on all levels for continued learning and partnership in this innovative pursuit. And we will, um, attempt to answer any questions, and if we can't, we'll take note and certainly, uh, return with, with those responses.
Any questions, room board? Go ahead.
When you say rural services outside of the district, what does that mean? That more people from outside the district will come here, or you're gonna expand to other areas?
Well, re- right now, um, there are approximately 30 to 40% of students we serve come from outside the district boundaries already. And so, we want to serve students here as needed in Edgewood ISD, as well as anywhere, uh, they're in need.
So, they're coming from the outside?
Not just going in, back in.
Correct.
No.
And what you mean by new, future-ready model, roll up again? Is that what you said?
I did say that. So, what I mean by that is that we are looking to provide more access to our students and to all students that are interested. And so, that's just us saying on the top of what education is moving towards.
Right over now. I'm right over here. Uh, talk to me a little bit about the wraparound services. Are those services that are offered through Learn for Life, or are those services that are provided for the district?
So, both. We have, I mentioned that we have a Hope Room, and if you're not familiar with, um, our campus, we have some teen parents that attend our school. So, we do have, we work very closely with those students, and they're able to bring their children to our campus. So, we have a room dedicated to them bringing their students, their children, to the campus, and they're able to continue working on their studies while their students, or I'm sorry, while their children are playing. Uh, so, that's one of the wraparound services. But we also work really closely with Edgewood on, um, migrant students, just anything that, that we need resources on, we know that we can call upon Edgewood and we work together with them.
Any other questions?
Okay. First, I want to thank Learn for Life and Richline and Lifelong Learning people. Uh, it's really nice that we have especially two graduations per year. I'm seeing the students graduating in those, well, I also like student parents. Um, I guess my first question is, um, how, how many, a number of students can we serve at Learn for Life?
Right now, with our current schedule, we can serve up to 350. But we offer four different tracks. Our students, right now, with the current model that we have, they have to attend four hours a day. So, this year, we have, well, every year, we've had four tracks, and the students can choose to come from 8 to 12, 9 to 1, 10 to 2, or 11 to 3.
Thank you. Um, my second question, um, so, I know it's like the literary, uh, like the virtual school, but, um, do we know, like, what does that kind of look like? Does that kind of mean like a little bit of in-person learning and like online? Or like, would that possibly mean, like, does it, like, mean virtually, like?
So, what it would mean is it would free up a schedule to students that aren't able to attend every day and would not be able to attend the four hours a day. So, we would still have that connection and relationship with the students. They would still meet with their mentors, and then, design a, an individual learning plan to carry out throughout the week.
Yes. Thank you. Um, as Ms. Willman said, if the student's, uh, weekly schedule is such that there's more flexibility to attend three days a week instead of five, because on those other two, they're accessing curriculum from off-campus, still having access to certificate teachers and, and tutors, uh, through those, you know, future learner-ready, you know, options, then that allows for increased enrollment for more students to attend on the days they're, they're not there, which goes to your question about how many can we serve in that building grows. If there's more flexibility, we often will refer to it as a university model, where students are making their schedule based around their work and their adult responsibilities. Um, and some of those other wraparound services you were asking about include partnerships with social service agencies, where they might bring in food, um, for, for the young, um, children that the students might be bringing to campus, um, or clothing, or, uh, resume, uh, prep and interview, mock interviews. So, there are a lot of community partners that, that Ms. Willman engages with and we support, so that we can bring those wraparound services into the school in combination with the district.
I guess my last question is actually two. Um, is there a waiting list to get into this program already? And, um, I'll see the other question here in a second, maybe you got it.
There are certain students that can't be served because of limitations of the student, thought, students in a room. So, all that you speak to that, is I think you should say those.
So, as far as the waiting list, right now, there's a waiting list for, I mean, I don't really want to call it a waiting list. There's people that are currently applying to be a part of our campus. And so, we have, right now, we have 190 that are, um, enrolled, and we have like 20 more that are attending orientation this week to start next week. So, as far as a waiting list, we try to turn those applications around really quickly, so we don't lose the interest of the students.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, I do have one question.
Oh, okay.
Um, I just want to tell, like, um, so, for the, like, the whole thing of planning about the virtual learning, um, do you think there will be opportunities to, like, engage, like, stakeholders, like, community members or, uh, members of the school district as well?
Thank you, yes. Absolutely, but this is the planning year. This is when we get to work together with all of the, the ISD departments to look at instructional programming, curriculum, scheduling, services, um, access to that curriculum. We, we're really emphasizing the hybrid part, not as much the virtual learning part. It's not as if we want to turn into an online school. It's not as if we want to turn into an online school. That is not the objective. The objective is to loosen the attendance requirements in the building so that a student who has transportation barrier and cannot make it to the school is considered absent. Well, could he or she be learning from home on that one day when they can't take the bus? That's what we're hoping to achieve, is to serve those students who have barriers through this model. And will they need a Chromebook or some device so that they can access the curriculum when they're away from campus perhaps? And we do that in other places. But the emphasis is on the personalized learning and flexibility of the model. And everybody will be involved in my comment or side impact.
I have another question. Do y'all need more outreach or you have plenty right now of the students that we have?
Outreach to recruit students? We're always looking for people to do flyer drops and put out yard signs.
Because I love this program and I feel that every student that unfortunately drops out of that school or in the district, so it's a second chance. And I like the fact that we offer like childcare and the wraparound services because without that, very few people have an opportunity to be served. And then also, so how, how can I advertise this? For, I mean, I don't know, there's some people I can put on.
I like to keep it, we call it a rack card. It's like this, you keep it in your bag and you're on the market or you're anywhere talking to anybody and hand it out. Or little business cards.
I would buy a flyer or something to sell stuff.
Flyers and our social networks and all that we can follow.
If you give me that, I want to bring more people because I think it's a great opportunity.
Great. And if I may make a distinction, the childcare is something we try to make sure that people know that it isn't a childcare because the child must be on the lap of the parent at all times. They're never left alone without the parent. So it's child on lap and HOPE stands for Helping Our Parenting Students Excel, H O P E. That was developed by a teacher who saw and then just realized that that needs to be spread. But so we don't receive childcare funding. We were not audited that way and it's much more informal than that.
So you allow the child to accompany the mom?
Yeah, yes.
And you don't have the children separated?
Correct, they're never separated.
The mom can bring the child?
Yes. And then we sometimes will put those parenting students together with their little ones in a room with a teacher because they can identify with each other and peer support and it's just more welcoming and it's not stigmatizing.
So, just a quick distinction. So keep in mind, what they're asking for at this point is support so that we can look into the program for the next year. The program and the services that we currently have are still in place. Ms. Castillo, you asked about how they've been getting the word out. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what I've seen ultimately, they're recruited because they thought they mostly weren't enough. It's the kids that are recruited. So when you're in graduation, you hear the kids say that, they're sharing the information. So we'll get a flyer. I mean, I know we use them in our social media pushes because we're pushing all of our operating schools. And then you can pull them from there. But I just want to make sure that the board members understand, there is a distinction here. We are looking for support so we can look into the exploratory piece. It is still being defined by the state, so a lot of pieces missing. But we want to make sure we get into the exploratory here, just to make that exception. Now, I'm not saying don't do outreach. We'll provide you with what they currently use already about the current program. Like, it probably wouldn't be a good idea to go out and say, we already have a virtual option and you can't, we don't have it yet. So it's still in its early phase. It's just to be distinct for all board members, okay? Okay, so we'll move on to our next group. Mr. Chalmers is going to move on over. Thank you guys again. I guess, and we will have a presentation from the leadership team, so Mr. Chalmers. Board members, as you're writing down your questions, I see some of you writing down questions, please. We'll pick those up for you. There's also the folks that are sitting next to you. If you have any doubts, you can ask them.
I brought my glasses this time because last time I had a little issue. I found out that I had an inflammation in my cornea of the book. So, better, but just in case. Welcome, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Tonight in our board presentation, we're going to look at all these different components tonight. Of course, we have our priorities and our six goals along with our leadership definition being the center of everything that we do and of course, our board of trustees operating forms. As we go forward tonight, I'll be joined by three individuals. Ms. Salinas was actually tied to the Learn for Life presentation and so she'll be, will be in this particular component. Dr. Mack is going to be covering a couple of the items and then let me go ahead and get started. So these are the pieces that we're going to cover, our LSG monthly report, policy update one twenty-five, secondary EFP local, instructional resources. We're also going to look at policies F N C local, student conduct, and for personal communication devices, electronic devices, and policy AP local additions. And we'll also be covering another piece called policy BF, local board policy. So as the national that we're going to be talking about is TTEP's appraisers. So, Low Star Governance Monthly Monitoring Report for this year, August twenty twenty-five. As you know, in here, we provide our twenty-four twenty-five Low Star Governance Monthly Calendar. And for this particular workshop, August fifth, we're going to cover the Trade Progress Measure one point one, which is our North Star Goal. And also, we're going to provide to you the LSG Summary of Goals Met for twenty-four twenty-five. As you can see below here with the estimation mark in the triangle, constrained progress measure one point one will not be available until August thirteenth. Why is that? Because that's when Accountability twenty twenty-five will be released by the state, at which time I plan to come to you at the August board meeting with that particular component in place. Okay, so our next area is the Low Star Governance Summary of Goals for twenty-four twenty-five. This particular component has all of our, excuse me, all of our LSG goals. And if you look at the diagram, let me make that a little bit bigger. So this is the first half of that document. You have student outcome goals listed here. In this case, you have goal one and for reading, constrained progress measure one point one, one point two, one point three, which stands for the kindergarten reading, grade one reading, and grade two reading. And student outcome goal two, which is our third grade star mathematics for that particular piece. And we have a goal progress measure two point one, two point two, two point three. I know we cover these in that every month and have for the last several years. And you're familiar with each of these components. So what we have here is a compendium of all these components. And you can see we have the twenty twenty-two baseline there on the left going down to each one of those progress measures and goals. In twenty twenty-three scores, those are the scores reported to this governance body during the year twenty twenty-three. And twenty twenty-four scores, of course, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five scores. To the right of that are the twenty twenty-five goals for that particular year and the five-year goal that was set for that particular component. And on the right-hand side, you see the target years. Now, these target years, we always do these in groups of five. We have to make sure that we have five years for each one of these goals and each one of these goal progress measures. If you look down inside, what I have highlighted in yellow means that in that particular year for that particular objective, the district met that goal at the end of the year. I want to point out twenty twenty-five, those in yellow, we've met. And you can see the area concerning right now is the mathematics area. And that, as you've seen over the, over the months, when we presented this this past year. The next half of that is the second part of this, which is goal three, which student outcome goal is for our college and career readiness raw scores. And you can see at the very top, we've met those three. And we have goal progress measure three point one for Success Texas Success Initiative. We have goal progress measure three point two, which is for our AP, Advanced Placement Scores. And goal progress measure three point three, percentage of students completing dual credit courses. And of course, goal progress measure three point four are those for our industry-based certification. You can see across the board, in this particular goal, we've met every one except for the dual credit, which is at eighteen percent of our goal for this year, is thirty-four percent with thirty-six percent being the five-year goal. Again, as you look at goal constraint one, the bottom half of that, we have our constrained progress measure one, number accountable campus. As you can see, we do not have that released by DEA, nor have we had twenty twenty-four for that particular piece. Goal progress measure two point one is our optimum goal for LSG-oriented professional development. And that particular piece, we did quite well this past time at eighty-nine percent. The next one is percentage of teachers given to the district did not increase, right? We started at twenty-three point seven, the next year, we were at an all-time high of twenty-eight percent, but brought that down to nineteen percent and then this year at eighteen point seven percent. Then for twenty twenty-four, the state average was nineteen point one, so doing quite well in that area. On the very bottom, we said this data is derived from the following data, data platforms, PON Data Suite, Frontline Engineering, and of course, Texas Education Agency. And here for the goals met are in yellow. One thing that I want to point out, for the, as I go into the policy component, I want to talk to you about the eighty-nine legislative session, which was January fourteenth to June second, just ended this past June, two months ago. It ended June second and at that time, the Texas Education Agency published what's called the Commissioner of Education Rules. In other words, it gets the legal ease and places places education ease, which eventually becomes what we follow in Texas Education Code. This was provided by the eighty-nine legislature on June twenty-sixth. It included updates on legislation such as House Bill two, Senate Bill five, seven, and others. And this timeline, implementation timeline, continuing through early August twenty twenty-five and beyond. So quite a bit of legislation coming down the pipe. This causes our transition from legislative to education policy. It's early August and beyond. And so if we look at the TASM policy alert, we received the TASM policy alert for SP thirteen library materials, SP four oh one extracurricular activity participation, and HB fourteen eighty-one personal communication devices, released on July eighth. So we had our policy review session with TASM on July fifteenth and sixteenth and were able to look at these components. And TASM Policy Service will be sending out update one twenty-six, which will have a large number of policies in mid-October twenty twenty-five. What I wanted to give the board is a timeline. As soon as the legislation ended in June second, people were scampering to get this information translated, transcribed, and into policies that we see today. Anticipated update one twenty-six will be released in mid-October. And this includes all of these components, armed security officers of school, open carry for school marshals, conflict of interest for administrator moonlight, employee practices for school psychologists, employee standards of conduct, human licenses, period of prayer and reading of the Bible, SB eleven, epinephrine and assigned medications, FFAC, local medical treatment, and that is actually one that we're taking today or this month because we want to make sure that we have this at the start of school. FF, student welfare, reporting and investigating certain misconduct, FFOs, serious discipline, conduct on school premises, removing spectators, and non-school use of school facilities used by religious organizations. So you can see a whole plethora of policies being brought, not in one particular area, but really across the board. Okay, so with that said, I want to turn our attention to item five A. Board members, on last week, I believe, we had our Team of Eight training. And in that training, I pretty much went over all these policies. I also gave you a handout for that and I also gave you some handouts today that have some policies. This particular piece includes the changes to local policy, the update one twenty-five. Basically, this is our second reading that will be approved at this month's regular board meeting. The other piece is FFAC. Now, I believe you all have FFAC in front of you and I provided that to you with the op-od and the update. So that way, everyone's pretty much on the same page with FFAC, which basically changes our ads off-campus for EpiPens. We want to make sure that we include that. We do do want to sign components and basically, we have to report that, as it says here, to and from school, but also have to have training for all of our nurses and administrators and teachers that handle such pieces. Next one is EFP, local instructional materials, library materials. This was part of Senate Bill thirteen that changed how library materials are required and challenged to ensure the district provides a wide range of materials, varying the difficulties and diversity, and also provides standards for collection, development, and dissection and evaluation of library materials. The next piece that we covered at our Team of Eight was policy F N C E local. Policy F N C E local is House Bill fourteen eighty-one, which talks about prohibiting the use of personal communication devices. Now, as I said earlier, and I gave the timeline, this comes directly from Texas legislation, this past legislation that ended June second. So this is in law and we have to follow this piece. So the law becomes effective September eighteen, but as a practical matter, Edgewood ISD will act before the start of twenty-five, twenty-six school year to place a notification for all of our parents. Now, in your handout, you all recall what I said, that we will not remove or destroy or get rid of the phones. We are changing that. We will dispose of those phones only after all processes have been put in place by the legislation to contact parents. And we're not talking the last day of school, we're probably talking sometime in June, in which case we will dispose of them and every effort to contact the parents has been made. We do this because over time, we'll collect X number that parents won't come by and pick up, even though after several contacts and conversations, they decide not to. And then we're stuck with them over years and we have started accumulating a good number. So the idea is to not give them so we can pick them up. I want to make sure we make that distinction. FB local admissions, this particular piece talks about homeschool and boundary zone. There's another Senate Bill. Senate Bill four oh one states that the district wants to prohibit homeschool students participating in that group of families. Through the district, it must adopt the policy if it is such. To adopt the policy, by the deadline means that wherever they live, outside or inside the net boundaries, they will be participating. And this one, we had a conversation on at length to describe what this policy actually is. This particular component, you have this actually tabled. This is BF local board policies. In this case, local policies may be adopted or amended by a majority of the board at any regular or special meeting provided that board members have had advanced written notice to propose change and that it is in place on the agenda for such being. and that it is in place on the agenda for such being. Local policies become effective upon board adoption and/or at a future date designated by the board upon adoption. During our policy review, uh, this particular policy came to our attention because we seem to be one of very few districts that have two meetings. Uh, majority of the districts in the area, uh, only have one reading. So that's why this is coming to you. You have that particular piece in front of you, and it should be the last two paragraphs that outline that. The next piece that we're covering, uh, is Dr. Mattens.
Sure, good evening, Mr. President, Boarder Justice, and Dr. Hernandez. We have one item coming from the Office of School Leadership, which is to update the teacher evaluation support system appraisal list. This is a recurring item that's needed for compliance for us to evaluate teachers, uh, in a timely manner. These are the individuals that are added to the list or not employed, uh, in the district when the original list was approved.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mattens, and that concludes our presentation to an end. This is my contact information and also the T O S I, always, always familiar to you. And, uh, thank you, uh, again, all these follow our leadership definition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Also, thank you for your presentation on that Thursday, the day for us during our team of eight training.
You're very helpful, sir.
Yes. Uh, any questions from the board?
I have a question. Uh, for the board policies, B F local, uh, so is it still going to be our practice to do, uh, the first and second reading?
That particular policy adopted by the board would reduce the second, first and second reading, and will only have one reading. Again, this was taken by the fact that we're one of the few districts that has the two reading policy. And as long as we get this to the, to our, to the board members in enough time, we have our board workshop where we cover those pieces, and then, then that's when we have time to discuss this policy. Uh, my thinking is that, and I prefer to be superintendent for this, but we will actually provide these board updates, and, uh, you'll have the time to read them.
So we would be, be getting rid of the component of the first and second reading?
Yes, this changes from the first and second reading to one.
Okay.
And we usually, I'll ask that, we usually bring those updates?
Uh, we usually bring those updates as the TASB, uh, as TASB sends us updates. So for example, Mr. Chavez sent out, or just showed that October, we would have the next TASB one twenty-six. And so just following our cadence, you will get it at the, at the workshop. We'll send you follow-up material, um, and then it'll be brought up here in consideration for that month's regular meeting. And so, uh, the item would be going to a first reading.
I also have a question for the F N C E, the communication devices.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you said the state's still developing it, and so we're going to be adopting a local thing. So the state will also, like, whenever they're finished, don't, will have a legal update from the state?
Uh, no, I meant F F A C was the one that was on that list for one twenty-six. Actually, F F A C is brought in with our policy update one twenty-five. F N C E, uh, we've received several, uh, directions and guidance from the state. Uh, both ASD and G D A has sent out guidance on those particular pieces.
Uh, so I have a question, um, if we're allowed to, like, talk about communication. Um, so I understand that this is going to get rid of, like, communication from, like, personal devices, but like, as a district, like, will, like, our team, our students still be able to, like, use their, like, online, you know how they have Microsoft Teams email, like, will they still be able to have, like, devices to use that to communicate with, like, their teachers?
So, uh, in terms of, we have, uh, kind of technology officers there. We utilize Chromebooks, and in some cases, we utilize, uh, tablets or, I'm sorry, iPads. Uh, those are issued by the district and they're used by the district. And so those particular communication devices are going to be in place. It's personal communication devices.
Okay, well, like, my question is, like, um, cause they're not going to be able to use their personal devices at all. So like, will this probably be like an opportunity to really use, like, the district resources more? Uh, cause that's where I'm looking at, like, making sure that our district resources, like, everything's up to date. Like, the students do have access to, like, a computer if, like, they need to research a project. Like, that's what I'm making sure that we have for our students.
Those are our goals as we work with devices, uh, to have enough devices for all the classes, uh, and from kindergarten, preschool, and all the way up to seniors. Uh, we also have special cases for students who are enrolled in dual-credit classes because they have to go outside to another website, like, U T Austin for on-ramps and, and such similar pieces. So we make sure that they do have those devices to be able to go out to those areas and utilize those resources as needed for their purposes.
Well, right now, like, our students don't have a one-to-one that they come, they're assigned to one specific laptop to keep in charge of the entire year. We don't have that, right?
Uh, we have that, we have that for special programs, like, early college, high school, it's middle programs where students, uh, frequently take those calls.
Sir, can you use the mic, please? Yes, we, uh, offer those, uh, one-to-one checkout, uh, of devices for students that are in special program, like, early college, high school, and, uh, others like that, where they, so some C T E courses as well, so.
But like, in the classrooms, are, do the students have a one-to-one device in, like, the classrooms? Like, the leg day or the one-layer, the math classroom?
There's a one-to-one device in the classroom, it's a classroom one-to-one. So is this, the class is over, they put them back in the cart, and they go to the next class, and they have another, uh, homework available to their classes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Do we have, uh, I guess, language for model uses, uh, we need a model type of information from the management team? Is there, do you want to have a day, or is it more, oh, he did, he did once, oh, he didn't get close to it?
Right, so regarding electronic communications, uh, we are developing regulations through the guidance of TASB, through the guidance of T D A's, and those regulations will be internal for administrative purposes on exactly the wish and that, and, and several permutations thereof.
That, that would be.
Yeah, that would be the next step, is that, um, we would develop admin regs. And so, board members, I do want to ask you to keep an open mind moving forward on this because you're probably going to hear different reports come out from across the state, you know, like anything else, our, our local news media will report things from across the state. And we live in a rather big state here. And so I've shared with my team how I personally am on superintendent, I'm hearing different things. Um, but we are sticking to the recommendations that we've been given by TASB, uh, to, to the letter. And so obviously, we're going to learn through this too. Um, and, but what I want to reiterate, and I think I, I know I did that in my videos that are going on, this is a state law that we must be compliant with. There are some, um, exceptions that are going to be in the policy. And so we're still working at, um, putting those into, into admin regs. But if you'll bear with us, we will, uh, work, work at those, one, depending on your, your support on this. Thank you.
Can I go back to the non-star governance portion of the data, please?
Yes, let me back it up.
I think the next slide would help me.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so like, I'm looking and I'm following a cohort, like, kindergarten, thirty-six percent, and then would we go to the next year, like, looking at cohort going to the first grade forty-four percent, and then second grade fifty percent? Is that how I'm supposed to be looking at it?
Yeah, it, it's by year, but if you're looking at it by cohort, for example, first kindergarten, uh, in twenty-three at fifty-two, that same group, when they went to first grade in twenty-four, they were scoring at fifty-three. That same, and I, it's not the same group, it's just that those group kiddos, right? Uh, scored at fifty-three in twenty-four, and when they were second graders, uh, they scored forty-nine in twenty-five. So you can kind of look at that stair step to look at cohort. Is, is that your question?
Yeah, so like, for the, um, the third grade for math, so, um, I started looking at the thirty-six percent, and then the twenty-eight, and then the seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, cause you did talk about math, but like, um, you said that we need to work on the math component part?
Math component, we call this past year was the year that we implemented, uh, 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 Eureka. Thank you, Eureka math. It changed into Bluebonnet math over the summer. And now we have an implementation of Bluebonnet math, basically the same structure, format. So we are in our second year of implementation. Also, fifth grade was not included last year, we're kind of working our way up. This year, it'll be third, fourth, and fifth, it'll actually be K one, two, three, four, five, and fifth grade will be implemented this year. So it takes a couple of years to kind of get this going. Uh, there's an implementation of that, we experience maybe new pieces. But this year, we're working with great minds, and it has been outstanding professional development for our math, for our teachers that teach mathematics in those subject areas, uh, in those grade levels, A through five.
Thank you. And also, like, going back to, like, the kindergarten?
Yes.
For the twenty twenty-five, we ended at forty-nine, but like, why was there a dip, like, on fifty-three to forty-nine? Like, we're still meeting our goal of the forty-five percent, but like?
Give, give, give me, are you going to read your math, math?
Read the, the top one?
Yes, thirty-two percent.
Um.
Our, what grade, I'm sorry?
Forty-nine percent for the one point three? Cause it goes fifty-two, fifty-three, then to forty-nine, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
So like, what are components that lead to, like, a dip, like, from year to year following the cohort of students?
That's a very good question. Uh, that is something that we can address, and, uh, there are multiple factors. There, each, each grade level brings on a whole different set of peaks, a different level of, of, uh, challenge. Uh, we also have different sets of teachers in grade levels. And again, uh, sometimes we have teachers that move, which means that they taught second grade, they'll teach third grade the next year. It's a process, but unfortunately, we can't do it every case because we have new teachers coming throughout. Uh, so it could be not only the cohort of the students, but cohort of the teachers too. And that's why we strive to provide quality professional development for all teachers, especially during this.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Chavez, is it also, um, fair to say that it's all student performance? So we could have a certain number of students in kindergarten, and that when, once they go to first grade, we're testing all, you know, first graders, but some of them might be new to first grade, new to Edway. Some of the students that were originally kindergarters with us could have also have left.
We have a migration rate, uh, and you can see this in all reports we take, approximately twenty-three to twenty-five percent, which means one in four kiddos, uh, moves. Uh, so thank you very much for that, the migration rate, uh, and you can see that in our paper. I left, I checked about twenty-three, twenty-five. So it's, uh, uh, thank you for checking that out, but yes, migration changes the exposure by twenty-five percent rate.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Martinez, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Hernandez, uh, community and team members. So if this is a matter of meeting agenda, what I want to concentrate on this evening, just because they, most of the items are recurring, we're going to talk about the compensation plan, item five T, and we're going to talk about the budget amendment five G. Budget amendments are recurring items, but this is, uh, related to a lot of the legislative actions. So we're going to talk about that specific item tonight. So Dr. Hernandez, I won't put the news, Dr. Hernandez already talked about the operating norms. I want to exercise those tonight particularly because we do have a lot of, uh, ground to cover. So I want to make sure that we have time to answer all of your questions, but if we don't get to you, please write something down so that we can, um, send the information on this Friday's update. So Mr. Chubb's already went through, uh, the legislative calendar. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but I do want to point out that this legislative year, especially just with H B two, these are a lot of the bullet points that we're having to go through. So with Mr. Trevino talks to you tonight, we have considerations for mandatory races that are all covered by the state. We have considerations for differentiating year one or year zero teachers with degrees versus non-degrees. So all of these points are being considered as we bring together proposal today. Um, just know that as we move through, we have a calendar that looks like this from the Texas Education Agency. So I want you to notice on the top left panel, those are just the bills that we are incorporating through August. Okay, that means that by next week, when our students walk in, we have to have at least a draft, and our principals and campuses have to execute at least drafts of all of those bills. And, and each one of those areas will notice that there are multiple bills, not just one, that we are looking to execute. So this is going to be a long year, folks. We normally try to bring in budget amendments and compensation once a year. This is going to be a little bit out of the ordinary, so we can expect to be having these conversations, uh, several times in the next few months.
Board, I'll add a, just a particular part to this. Uh, keep in mind, a lot of these, um, expectations that we receive from Austin, um, a lot of times they're not coming down with clarification on what do you expect the outcome's going to be of these. In other words, what do they, what should they look like in school districts? Um, as you know, right now, there's a special session going on, there's also a lot of talk around our STAR testing. We're probably down toward the last few years of that, and more than likely, it's going to transition into a more of a beginning, the middle, and end of year test in multiple grade levels. Um, and so know that we're transitioning into that. There's also expectations, I know we've been talking a lot of teacher retention, that's always been really important. But what I'd like to share with you, because sometimes laws are passed and they're not connected in terms of their realistic expectations. For example, it is for the year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and correct me, Mr. Trevino, if I'm, if I'm a little off, but we are expected to no longer have a district moderation teacher. I think I mentioned this to you guys at team of eight. That expectation is pretty lofty expectation when you consider that the, the universities are not producing enough teachers in these areas, specifically, and I believe the, the areas that are right now cited by the state are math, language arts, special ed, bilingual, you can't find candidates for them, and the certification, people are not coming through the certification program. So I understand we have statutory obligations that we are required to keep for parents, but if we don't have the material, the talent, if you will, that becomes a problem for us. So we will put this on the agenda in terms of, I don't mean a formal agenda, but in terms of our, what we could be picking to you at workshop to kind of guide you through that. But as you can tell, there's a lot of information that's coming down, and then we expect a whole other ton of information to come in October. So I wanted to just kind of look at that after all the assumptions, right?
Thank you, Dr. H, and those are the high needs areas, you can either on the head, Bible, spread, uh, computer science, tech applications, D L A, math, and C T E. So I just wanted to share this for the board that unlike any, uh, our other years that we try to be really practical and bring in amendments and compensation once a year, uh, we do that beginning, middle, um, and end of year for budget amendments. It's, I, I asked for grace this year because as we get new information for opportunities, we will bring that back to the board, and those are looking like some of the bills will bring in, uh, funding, but we'll have to apply. So there, there's a lot of, of opportunities, but they are going to require board approval and a lot of conversations. So without having it over to Mr. Trevino, so she can walk us through the compensation plan.
Good evening, Board President, Board Members, Dr. Hernandez and community members. So what I'm going to go through is the compensation plan recommendations that we're bringing forward, uh, to you for approval, with a couple of options. So before we move on to the compensation, I wanted to make sure we reiterate on the assumptions that we just saw, like, some of the things that we're doing as a district in trying to overcome some of these items that are bringing, that are being brought forth. So as a school district, we do go out and we recruit outside of, uh, San Antonio. We try to stay in the surrounding areas, we have seen going out a little bit further, we don't get the same type of interest. And when we do, those are individuals that are directly linked to us. So we have our own district job fairs that we've seen that we've really had, uh, great turnout, and we have noticed, we had one at the end of July, we had about nine, ninety-six individuals attend, ninety-plus, I should say. Then we had one just recently, last week, and we were a little over a hundred and ninety, uh, attendees that attended. So we have had the interest here that, uh, come in, we do have a referral program as well, that. So we have had the interest here that, uh, come in. We do have a referral program as well that y'all approved. That is really the, trying to get those individuals that are currently here who go on and recruit individuals. So, so thank you for that. All the supports that you have approved us have really come and played a big part on, on kind of where we are with our staff. The other big, uh, piece that I can say really helps us with some of these assumptions that you can see, we kind of had already started hearing some of these assumptions that were coming as far as the, uh, DOI teachers and not having certified teachers. So getting our grow your own programs, our teacher pipelines. These are all big areas that have really, uh, assisted us. Those of you who attended the convocation, saw the technical teachers and the resident teachers that were, that were there and, uh, the excitement that they had, that they actually get to be in our classrooms that last year before they graduate. So they tend to come back and they see that. So just wanted to make sure that you were, um, that you're aware that we're seeing some of these things that are really committed to fruition, uh, with your support. So thank you for that. So moving forward, uh, we have our teachers. Of course, teachers have been, um, and continues to be one of our strong focus on compensation. As we're looking at this, on average, now doesn't mean every single, but on average, all of our teachers will receive about a little over seven percent raise. Okay, as you look on the left-hand side, uh, we have what's required out of state. That's the teacher, uh, state retention. As you can see, they focus on the year three and four years of experience. And with the district R side, we're required to provide a twenty-five-hundred-dollar, uh, raise for that, that teacher. If they have five plus years, then it's a five-thousand-dollar raise. And that goes to their base and that is something that they will stay, that will stay with them. So we have to sustain that from now moving forward. Um, we have been giving, uh, some one-time retentions and those are not, uh, but these particular amounts here are those that stay with them the entire time. So they will stay at twenty-five-hundred and five-thousand dollars and that will become part of their base pay as we look at the compensation plan. Then also another requirement from the state that we received was non-certified teachers and certified teachers. So non-certified teachers have to be paid less than a certified teacher. Uh, here is a district where we're recommending is a, a five-hundred-dollar difference. I know we can say five-hundred dollars is not a big gap, but we have to also understand that we are competing with other districts that, uh, may be paying a little bit more. And these individuals that are not certified, um, could leave us and go to another district and we're trying not to do that. We're trying to work with them, coach them, kind of build them up. So we just want to make sure that we're invited by the state, whatever that's the requirement is. So we're recommending paying a five-hundred dollars less right now. So they would be at fifty-eight-five and our certified teachers will start at fifty-nine thousand dollars. On the right-hand side, this is not what the state is requiring, but as a district, what we're recommending to help with our retention is that we also, uh, compensate our teachers that are zero years, one year, and two-year of, of experience. Again, the state on the left-hand side started at three, but as a district, we're asking for your support to at least provide some additional compensation for those years that do not fit in the same category, that are a little bit, um, have less experience, but still we want to make sure that if they've been here with us, we want to continue to retain them and keep them here with us. So that total cost, um, of the recommendation here is about two-point-two million that we're asking for to, uh, pay our teachers. So again, on average, just a little over seven percent that all of our teachers will be getting. Okay? Here is a little example, uh, a comparison, I should say, twenty-four, twenty-five school year to twenty-five, twenty-six. You can see kind of where we're at. As you can see, I highlighted year zero. It, it shows fifty-nine, four thirty-one. But we also had a one-time stipend that we provided for about nine-hundred-and-eighty, yeah, nine, I think it was nine-eighty-one that they received, um, last year. It was a one-time stipend that they got. So they, their base pay was fifty-eight-five. Uh, so as you can see, going from year zero and twenty-four, twenty-five, you go to year one, they're going to be going to fifty-nine-five. Just about a thousand-dollar, uh, difference. And then you see one to two, you can see the difference. If you go to year five, you can see where their four-year teacher was making sixty thousand, six sixty-seven. For year five this year, they'll be making sixty-five thousand, six sixty-seven. That's a five-thousand-dollar raise that we're required to provide by the state. Okay, just wanted to see the side-by-side comparison. Here, I only showed you the year ten, but it does include all of our teachers going down to year thirty, right? I just want to give you a, a vision so you can see a, a good, uh, optics. So the other item I wanted to make sure and emphasize is that the state was very clear, um, when we see some of our compensation plans, registered nurses, librarians, and counselors are included in the teacher pay scale in the past. They were included. The state was very clear, letting us know that this raise that they were recommending was strictly for teachers. So the compensation plan, we have to create a different, uh, pay cycle for librarians, uh, counselors, and registered nurses. So I wanted to make sure and emphasize that the requirement that we have was not something as a district we chose, but the state is telling us. Teacher compensation plan, that's the, uh, scale that you just saw. And we're going to have to have a different one for registered nurses, librarians, and counselors. What you see here is I'm giving you two options. Option A will be a two percent raise from the midpoint. Option B is a one-point-five raise from the midpoint. The total cost that you see here on option A with benefits, and that is for all of the individuals in that group, which is your registered nurses, librarians, counselors, and social workers. The total cost for a two percent raise from the midpoint is fifty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-four. Option B, if we vote for a one percent raise, the total cost for all those individuals in that group is forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventeen. The next group here is all central office and campus administrators. Again, what you see here, option A, a two percent raise from the midpoint will be about two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. Option B, one-point-five is two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight. That includes all central office and your campus leadership teams, all your administrators at the campus and central office. Again, this is something that the state, the money that we're receiving from the state does not allow us to pay any administrators. This is going to be all coming out of our local funds. The next group that we have is auxiliary and, uh, herd professionals. That's the group that it includes. It's child nutrition, custodians, physical plant, operations. Our police department, herd, going in to actual support staff. Again, option A, two percent raise from the midpoint will cost about five-hundred-and-four thousand. Option B is a one-point-five percent raise from the midpoint is three-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand. I also want to make sure and emphasize that we are one of the few districts a couple of years back, uh, that with your approval, we raised the minimum hourly rate to fifteen dollars an hour. I know some of our neighboring districts right now are currently working on getting to fifteen dollars an hour. Um, and we were just one of the few about two, three years ago, we raised it to fifteen dollars an hour. So, so thank you for that. Um, also on the midpoint, I just want you to know that we, we will go from the midpoint. So that means all individuals in that pay group will get the same dollar amount. It's not from their actual dollar or hourly rate. It's going to be from the midpoint. For example, if we have somebody making ten, twenty, and thirty dollars an hour, ten could be the minimum. Twenty's the midpoint and thirty's the maximum. From the midpoint, the twenty dollars will save them. They're going to get about a forty cent raise or a forty, forty-dollar raise, whatever the case may be, depending on where it's at. But from that midpoint, everyone gets the same dollar amount, right? So if it's twenty dollars at midpoint, everyone in that pay group gets the same dollar raise in, in, in that. So I just want to make sure I emphasize that for you. So as a school district, this is what we have. Uh, option B, again, we have the teachers and then the one-point-five for all others. The top, the top categories that you can see over to the left-hand side are explaining the positions and what the cost will be. The total count of individuals that are included in there. The third column is the cost with benefits. It's about two-point-nine. The state retention, this is what we're getting from the state, what they're, what, what they're going to reimburse the district and provide the district is for the three, four years, or years of experience and five years. That's the total that we're getting from the state. We're also getting a support stack retention alignment. This is another amount that we're getting from the state. Again, we made sure we blacked out the administrators because we cannot pay the administrators out of any one of these two funds. So that will be something that we'll have to compensate as, as a district. The ma, the column that says adopted in June twelfth, that is something that you already approved with the last budget that came through with Ms. Martinez. These were the individuals that were on a step that we knew automatically were getting another year of experience. We automatically gave that. That is already included in the budget in two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighteen. That was already approved in June. If we were to approve a one-point-five raise with what, with all the groups, we're looking at a six-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand-dollar, um, approval to make sure that individuals get that breakdown. Down at the bottom, I just want to show you where we have general fund. It'll be two-point-three. We have child nutrition and that'll fund all of our child nutrition staff, fifty-nine thousand. And then we'll also sub-site that with some federal funds, which is about five-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars. That'll be the breakdown. So option A is our recommended option that we're bringing forward. Um, and that is a seven, a little over seven percent for teachers and a two percent for all others. Again, went through the categories, the total, uh, cost that's going to, that's going to be asked is nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. Is what we're asking for. Again, there is a breakdown. So the recommendation that we're, that we're asking for will be option A to give the teachers a little more than seven percent and then all others a two percent from the midpoint for all others. On the recommendation for compensation, uh, the compensation plan that we are recommending, there's going to be some equity and compression adjustments, but I believe it's only like one category. So as I mentioned before, we were one of the few districts that approved the minimum fifteen-dollar rate. So when we did that, there were some of our pay groups that were a little bit under fifteen, so we had to move those boxes. When we did that, we only moved the hourly, but now as we're looking at it, there's some that are making, they're at the higher end of the hourly rate. When they get moved to the administrative scale, right, which could be that now that I'm going from hourly to administrative, well, they are not making quite as much because we only moved this box. So that's why when I see equity and compression adjustments, we may have to make those adjustments. And right now I can see that it's about two groups, one category that we have to make an adjustment on. Um, and it's, I can review the total cost of what that will be, but that will be just the, the one change that I can say on the compensation plan. And as you know, our compensation plan, once approved, we post it on the website. Right now, what you see in the website, the twenty-four, twenty-five is exactly what we'll be bringing forward aside from any equity and compression adjustments, uh, some stipend and supplemental pay updates. Um, as you know, on our ACE model, which is our, uh, Gus Garcia, we have some of those individuals that were receiving stipends. Some of those adjustments are being made, uh, because we were just sustaining it for a couple of years. So those are some adjustments. And then any new roles or any restructures. I know that you've heard quite a bit about restructures that have been coming forward with individuals as we're eliminating FTEs. We're combining some duties and responsibilities. And those are some of the restructures that you will also see in the compensation plan that we'll be bringing forward. And now, we want to do some questions. Give you about three minutes or?
Thank you. I'm going to ask, I'm going to go first, sir.
Yes.
Right now, uh, because it's something we're passionate about. Can you go back a few slides to the, uh, where it says like the one-year retention or two-year? I don't remember where it said. No, keep going. Okay, so, uh, just to clarify, um, do the non-certified teachers, if they have more than zero years of experience, do, are they also on that ladder?
Yes, currently they are on that.
Okay.
And, and to emphasize a little bit more, this, right now, what we know, it was only affecting zero-year teachers, certified versus non-certified. None of the others.
So there's no guidance from the state on, for, uh, for, uh?
Just year zero.
Just, okay, that's, that's where I was getting.
Yes, yes. Okay, they cannot make more. That is correct. The year zero certified versus uncertified, uncertified cannot make more than certified.
And I just want to, just, just to, uh, I get to express that the non-certified teachers, they can, from my understanding, they're, they're eventually going to go away, right? We'll be able to hire them anymore for public schools. However, they can still go to charter schools, right?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and, and I think, I'm just saying that because we, we still have to stay competitive regardless of whether we're, you know, whether we can have them in a few years or not, that they can still, you know, need prior to, to their new business.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Yeah, one of those, so. Board, that's a perfect example. One, this has been the most I've seen the state give in the weeds about you cannot pay a non-certified teacher more than a certified teacher. One, that's one thing. Two, um, if, yes, there's always the fact that teachers can go onto a charter school, which doesn't require certification. This is why sometimes we bring the contract abandonment, because sometimes they will abandon contracts. And then take that into consideration to by twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we can't have, we should, the pipeline should be full of certified teachers. Those are some of the things that we are grappling with in the ISD term now, uh, because obviously we want to have teachers, but again, you can't find them. So I want to connect that with you. Any other questions?
I have a question. Can I go to the next slide, please, Alan? Uh, so my question was, um, like even though last year we just did like the one-time retention bonus, like why didn't we really increase, uh, percentages from zero experience? Like, why didn't we make it like sixty thousand or like, why didn't we increase it like from the year prior?
So year zero last year was at fifty-eight-five and they had the one-time retention stipend. So this year's zero-year teachers are going to be making fifty-nine. So we did increase it by five-hundred dollars. But yes, on your question is, could it have gone to sixty? It could have. It was going to require a little bit more. And I think Ms. Martinez can answer that because that would have been a different adjustment and a cost.
Yes, so every time we move a step, Mr. Hernandez, it's, it seems really simple, but it affects six-hundred-and-forty-seven employees that are on the scale. So a thousand dollars times six-hundred-and-forty-seven, that starts to add up and then we have to decompress between steps. So it was purely financial last year and the year before, I believe. We made recommendations for one-time payments that we're allowed to do out of Esther. That's why we're addressing the scale this year. We were going to do that anyway. Um, and now with the state actually giving us a little bit of money for teachers with some experience, we're able to do that this year. So all of the scale will see the twenty-five-hundred, five-thousand all the way down. This is just one example, but we're decompressing this year. Prior years, it was purely financial.
Mr. V, let me add one more thing to that. The other thing too is that we're trying to shift more to recruit more teachers with years of service. And the reason I'm saying that is because the more that we can localize teachers that are walking with more years of service, then the less peripheral support, or what's peripheral support? Instructional coaches, things like that. The idea is to, if they're coming in with some experience, then they're probably going to need less support to stay in the classroom. So we're trying to stay ahead of, uh, always just having brand new. There's nothing wrong with having brand new, there's nothing wrong. But anytime we can recruit, uh, folks with more years of experience, that's the goal that we have. And, and we've, we've actually done this recommendation as well from our, from our friends at TSCA. Uh, was asking us to consider more for, for experience. And TSCA is our teacher group that we work with, so I wanted to add that in there.
Uh, do you know, like, we have, like, the district created a list of like what the other districts around our area did for increases, like for zero, first year experience?
Well, some of it, as I, we mentioned, it is prescribed. So that particular step is zero. There is no wiggle room there. Now, in terms of percentages, every school district is going to be a little different. I know some folks, uh, that they did not extend an increase to folks that are not following in the teacher ranks. So counselors, social workers, they did not receive in some districts anything. So that is something that I, the recommendation I'm bringing to you through my team is, we want to make sure we include that. And I also want to thank this team because here, that we moved some of our categories that we couldn't include people. Um, we didn't really know that the state was going to change the category of teacher, but nonetheless, I think at this point, it would not be, be who us to not include our folks in these other areas because they're equally as important, social workers and our citizens, counselors. Is that any?
Can we have a poll there?
I have, because I'm sitting in the main. I'm, I'm the one sitting in super tense. And so we're, we're pretty open to one another about what we're doing. I try to stay in the line of, those that are around me, I can tell you that, uh, our, our district partner next to us, they did a two percent raise. That's what they did, um, in terms of the overall. And then I don't recall what they did overall with the teacher group. Generally, the way that we shared with me was it was a general two percent raise. So everybody got that.
Yeah, because like I'm looking at the San Antonio ISD for like year of experience zero. They're starting at sixty thousand. And then I'm looking at the north side around our other neighbor and they're starting at sixty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-five.
Right. So again, as I mentioned, I think the goal was to promote working in the community. But I don't, I don't remember northeast, but I think you mentioned northeast.
Northeast, northeast is at fifty-seven-five, you know, the scale, the showing scale.
It kind of depends on where you want to land. And I think for us, we're better off, uh, trying to promote at this point, uh, certainly it takes really much experience.
Any other questions?
Uh, can we look at the, where it says the fifteen dollar an hour? So when you're talking about like midpoint, what does that mean? Like the fifteen dollars is still going to stay minimum wage? Or will the new starting salary be two percent of fifteen dollars, two percent more?
Okay, thank you. Great question. So what we're going to do right now, because we know that we're probably going to be bringing this. So what we're going to do right now, because we know that we're probably under bringing this, um, multiple times, right now, we're asking 2% from the midpoint for current employees. So we're not moving the box, the pay grade box, so right now it'll still stay at fifteen dollars an hour, the minimum rate. Our employees will be hired, but that box will not move.
Why, why don't we move the box of fifteen dollars an hour?
We can move the box, and that's going to mean we're going to move all the boxes, and that'll just mean all the new hires will have to be paid at that. So we're looking at a increased cost, um, per state, right now we're looking at the current employees that we have. But that would be something that we're looking at to kind of see where we're at, when we're looking at all the other items that are coming out from the state as far as what's going to be required.
But you also give the report, uh, that, which compared region twenty as a whole, and so that's really our guidance that we give from Texas. And what are we calling in terms of pay? And I think Mr. Vino mentioned we fit at fifteen dollars. Reason we're bringing that up is because our neighbor, north side, just, I think that was something they posted recently in the media, that they were just getting to fifteen dollars. We've been there a while, so we also have to consider that if we change the scale, it changes the scale across the board. So that's, we're covering more funds from the district, and we have to think about longevity, uh, what other recommendations to bring to you in the future, based on what we know today.
And also, when we move the scales, it's not just going to be people coming in, and I want to be really clear about that. We also need to honor the years of experience, so if I've already been here two years, and I'm getting a 2%, you move the box. I'm a random employee coming in, I'm not best in the district, and I'm going to be the same amount as somebody else who's been here. So I just want to be really clear, it's not one level that you have to move, it's multiple in like eight payings. Right, so those are all considerations, again, they seem like pennies, or they seem, but it really is a two, three-step process that adds up really, really quickly. So we're going to take our time to evaluate them, um, and look to see what other, uh, our neighboring districts are doing, and to see how many vacancies we have to fill as well over the next few months. We have had some successful job, job fairs in the last, was it last week? So we're, we're still monitoring, and this inevitably will have to come back up again.
Uh, I want to ask, did you say that north side or others are barely getting to fifteen dollars an hour?
San Antonio ISD and some of our neighbors, uh, moved, so we moved about three years ago. But north side, and I'm, I'm not going to, I know north side because that was very public, is just moving and making the right relation to move to fifty. I don't know about north side's business, yeah.
And, and I want to remind everybody that it was on the assistance, insistence of the board to raise it to fifty. There wasn't, there wasn't that we approved it, we insist on it being raised.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say that I think San Antonio ISD is seventeen dollars an hour, and also like the city of San Antonio's minimum wage is a little over seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen dollars an hour.
Mr. Martinez, I would love to compete with everybody, trust me. We're going to go over some numbers right now, and, and we'll go through some of the facts so that the board is fully aware of the funding sources, how we're going to pay for this, um, and just give you all the information, and then you all let us know how we want to proceed, uh, we represent scenarios, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would love to give everyone a raise every year, but it's just, and, and we do it, uh, I mean, we're, we're not at the bottom, definitely, we're not Satan's, you know, the, the bottom, we're, we're somewhere, you know, in the middle, uh, but yeah, we're doing the best, the best we can. Um, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So now the finances, um, I want to look at the column on the left. When we came to you board in June, on June the 12th specifically, we adopted a budget that was eleven point, almost eleven point four million dollar deficit. We knew that legislation was coming, um, we have over the last few years, through attrition, through position, um, restructures, we have reduced costs significantly. We are still at a deficit. When, um, we adopted again, we're at eleven point four million dollars. The proposed budget amendment that we have is that middle column. This is still, just all the legislation that is still coming up, this is the best estimate of the cost at a, um, 2% raise would be about 2.6 million dollars. I want to emphasize that, it doesn't include just the raise though, we are also replacing bus engines. Remember when we adopted the budget, I said we don't have any capital in here. We needed to take care of people, we needed to take care of students, so we didn't, uh, bring any capital items. We had a very nominal amount from Mr. Williams to, to do some work. So we're asking for eighty-eight five for three bus engine replacements, it is not, um, new buses, it is full engine replacements, and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars to purchase technology vehicles that were fully leased. So this will get us out of the monthly payments, and the, the vehicles only have about between four and six thousand miles. So we've evaluated, and this would be a good move for us because it will eliminate the payment. So the amendment that we're asking for is 2.6 million dollars on expenses. Right now, with what we know today, we're estimating about eight million dollars in additional revenue. That would reduce our deficit by about 3.1 million dollars and bring our deficit budget into 8.2 million dollars. I'm going to remind the board that we've done well with our fund balance, um, our two and a half months required is about twenty-one point five million. We're a little over fifty, but we continue to monitor expenses, and we don't anticipate, we, we never want to get into that deficit. Um, but we're still monitoring, and these are the recommendations that we have today based on the information. As we get rent monies and opportunities, those are going to be coming back to the board, um, there, there's a lot, this legislative here, in opportunity and costs, so. The next item is for child nutrition. This also includes, we adopted the budget, um, in, again in June. We have about six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar deficit, again, those support for, um, cafeteria equipment and some of the items. We can't keep a very large fund balance in child nutrition, and we can only use the minus for that program. So we're asking for a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar amendment so that we can cover the raises, and more importantly, so that we can, um, outfit long apart with new furniture. That is the item that I have for the amendments, do we have any questions?
Any questions with board?
So for like the furniture, like what's going to be different? Is it just like furniture, wall branding, or cafeteria furniture?
I need to look at the design, Mr. Martinez, I can put that in the board, board update.
Thank you. And then like, for you being any other like raises, uh, all the raises from child nutrition would come right from the child nutrition, um, fund bucket, right?
That's right.
Um, if it's possible, like, I would like to see, or like the district see like what the child nutrition salaries are, like in our surrounding districts. Uh, that's just something I would like to see, uh, especially since, um, like their funding comes directly from their own budget. Their, their own funding doesn't come from like district, or it comes from the child nutrition budget for like salary increases.
So you want a market analysis of the surrounding districts for child nutrition staff, is that what I'm hearing?
If possible.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, everyone.
The rest of the items are recurring items, so unless there are exceptions.
I have a question, the, the budget amendments for the fund balances for the reoccurring items. I think they're like different buckets that were changing like the functions.
The budget amendment is, is what I covered, it already includes that was, yes, sir. The amount, those items that are at the bottom, those are changing functions, okay?
Okay, any more questions? All right, thank you, thank you very much. You want to say something?
So at that, board, that does bring all our presentations, uh, to an end this evening. I do want to highlight, uh, some things that I've asked our, can I see the picture? That I've asked our folks to add just to make sure that we have this information, because obviously these things are available, uh, for our general public. So there's the information on the general, on the recurring items. Uh, at the end, board, as we do in many, many things, we do add a roster, we determine, we understand there is a lot of order that we throw across, and so we want to make sure we have that there for, uh, your, your coruso, and then of course, if we had any questions that came up from the general public, so that is there. We've also made sure that all of our folks have added their email addresses, uh, and their info, contact information in case, uh, anybody has an interest in that. And so I'll make sure that our other group that presented earlier also follows up because we have Ms. Martinez, we have Ms. Trevinos, and then we have Mr. Williams. And so we'll make sure we add those, um, in our presentation so that that information is readily available, um, in case any constituents may have a question or not. And that brings us to an end, and so those are all our items, Dr. Hernandez, uh, for this evening. Of course, board members, you will get follow-up through this, in your board updates, as I mentioned earlier, but at this time, that is our presentation.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, I guess before, before I ask for a motion, uh, to adjourn, I, I'm, the good thing about being, at least for me, about being in education, at least the way it is, we get to kind of restart every year, you know, and that's, it's scary, and I do that as a teacher, as a board member, or as we start doing our normal, you know, every day, you know, our every month, you know, meetings and things like that. Um, but one of the things I'm, I'm, I'm trying to learn and, and be, become better at, um, you know, is, is trying to kind of move on from last year, learn from last year, um, and then see how, how we can improve. Uh, but one of the things in particular, uh, you know, uh, I'm going to kind of talk about myself for a little bit. Um, starting a new job, uh, I'm sorry, not a new job, but a new, uh, new, uh, a new campus, um, one of the administrators, you know, the, the principal, had, had mentioned something that, that I thought was really important. Um, and what she asked us to do as teachers, uh, is before we ask for anything, or before we bring anything up to, to administration, um, you know, is to ask three questions, and the three questions are, you know, first one should be, is it good for students, right? If it's a yes, then we'll go to the second question, is it good for the campus, or in this case, the district? Okay, and if we can, if we say yes to those students, then we can ask the last question, is it good for us, is it good for the adults? And, and for us, you know, we, we have to, we have to pretend with the first two questions all the time, right? Because there might be something really good for a student at one particular school, um, or particular campus, but it might negatively affect the district as a whole, and so I think we constantly have to, you know, kind of struggle with those things. Um, but that's something that I'm, I'm going to try to do and try to keep reiterating, you know, with, with the board and with the team of eight, um, you know, of asking those questions before we bring something up, is it good for students, is it good for the district? And then of course, is, is it good for us, you know, uh, as the adults? Um, of course, it'd be great if we can say yes to all three, that's amazing, but if we can say it's good for the, the schools, you know, and the students, that's, you know, that's something we can go forward on, and I'm just, you know, especially when it comes around budget and things like that, it would be great, you know, um, you know, to give, you know, better raises, more incentives, um, but, but at, at what point could that negativity affect, you know, the district? So I just want to keep those in mind, you know, I'm kind of speaking off, offhand right now, but, uh, that, that's something that I'm really going into this year considering, you know, in everything I do and every time, you know, I go over or say something. You have something?
I just had a question, uh, because we were talking about the reoccurring items, I don't think we discussed the charter of service, or the transportation. I don't think we discussed that, but I think it's a new item because it's in a different color.
The charters, is that, or miss? Did, did we miss it, or?
No, beads and RP, the vendor is new. So do you have a question about that specifically? We only have one response, so they're going to get the award, we did go out for RFQ, I'm sorry, for an RFP, we only had the one vendor reply. We will use the services, Mr. Martinez, in case our transportation can't meet the need or playoffs and things like that. We're trying to get much better in participating about being prepared for the year, so that's what that item is for.
So it'd be really for like a travel that's further than typical, like further than travel like close to San Antonio?
Usually that's the case, so we, I don't, I can't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Williams, uh, times that we use it in, in district.
There could be other times when we don't have the drivers available to, to drive, uh, our own, uh, coach, or don't you? So that could be another time, she mentioned, Ms. Martinez mentioned, we're going to play off, so we're going to play off, so we're going to go back straight forward, and so we want to make sure we have a transportation service available to our, transport our students.
Anything else? Okay, boy, uh, we stole my thunder, okay, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, but yeah, I really just want us to keep that in mind with, with everything, uh, you know, we have to think about the students, the district, um, then of course, lastly, you know, ourselves, because we still have to take care of ourselves as well. So with that, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Lopez, motions, is there a second?
Hi, second.
Okay, Miss Garcia, seconds, is there any discussion? Okay, if we have no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay, raise your hand. Okay, motion passes, we adjourn, thank you.
Do you have any questions to roll down, can you please give those to this, uh, Garcia, please?